It's a concern with other elements.
Listen, everybody.
I said lucky, yeah.
I know, but I.
You know, not bad. We could, we, we need price work, actually. It's been, everything's been.
Same the other night.
Was it nice? Yeah, it was, it was nice, good weather.
Everybody's got ice, you know. It's good. But it's just normal cycle.
Yeah.
A little bit, it'd be nice if we could.
My dad built house.
He's been Spider-Man last year. Last year, and it went down. When we get that podium, so.
We've had that.
Oh, that's the second ever seen that.
Yeah. You've just never noticed Cory because they've used it.
Yeah.
He said if.
What'd you say?
They've used it when we were in the other conference room.
No.
Yeah.
Was?
Yeah.
It's worse than what it was on Saturday when you guys.
Okay, I believe you. Yeah, so stole my table.
And getting up.
I'm so bad about that. Did you complain about it? Asked for twenty years ago.
And what he's saying is, I just need to relax. I just need to relax.
Does that explain it?
That's the worst.
The other one's over at the engineer's office.
Twenty years. That's even worse.
Well taken care of Cory.
Flat period.
Francis is gonna come out.
Believe them. Yeah.
He's gonna do that for us and everything, and then we have niece who's coming in on Saturday.
I'll take his.
His brother, they, they had nine kids.
Yeah. Ben, Ben and I have been working together on that. I didn't bid that.
I'll just replay.
He's got the table issue, you've got the clock issue. Lights gonna shine in at somebody's eyes.
That was a better. He can get his table. That's always stolen or a clock.
Oh, the clocks in the, no, the clock stayed in the old conference room. We will get you a new one. And the table, well.
You're just not looking at the table. You have a lot more hair when I wanted that first one of that tape. I could see still I didn't need glasses. I'll find out.
Just trying to take care of my.
That's the.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
That same one? Oh, just.
I need to get you a pen Cory.
Cory doesn't have it.
For you, because yours clicked. He needs to keep that one with no clicker.
Well, I can get, I can get another. Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. I can get one that doesn't have a clicker.
He won't be up here on the recorder.
I don't know, they may not want this.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, Heather's on there. Did you know that? She says her name.
I told her she could log in anytime and she said, okay, so.
Yes, I'm here, but I'm.
Oh, hi. Yeah, we can hear you.
How do you know, when? Are those new cameras or?
Yes, yes, we got two. It's a grand.
Fully make sure that you can't see.
Yeah. That's why they're not on.
Yes, it is recording.
Newbies.
Can I ask where you moved from?
From Marshalltown. For that Arizona.
That's where my dad went from.
Was it really?
Okay, everybody, we're gonna get started. Thank you. It's October fifteenth. Mills County zoning board of adjustment. Can we get a rule call, please?
Pat Collins.
Here.
Stan Galkas.
Here.
Cory Lake.
Here.
Jennifer Warren.
Here.
Heather Gentman.
Here.
Here on Skype, wherever it's. Okay, thank you. Can we get a review action approval of the current meeting?
I approve the current meeting.
Go ahead, too.
I'll second. First and second, thank you. Can I get a review action approval of previous meeting minutes? Actually, it's been last month.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, tonight's new business, we have a discussion formal action of conditional use permit twenty-four one ninety-five for the proposed rest. The proposed resource extraction located at Mar Avenue. And three hundred and twelfth street in Malvern, Iowa, in the Silver City Township. It is in the AR zone, and if the applicant is ready, we're ready for your presentation. Taking the time to call this meeting. Basically, I'm asking for permission to. To level off my property to a further grow the community in Malvern and to make our lot usable and usable for the future. I surveyed and all that stuff there in front of you. The final grades roughly within a foot of that blacktop road, Mar Avenue roughly. So it's not really digging a hole or anything like that. We're just basically taking the top off of the dirt. Majority of the dirt's going to that new subdivision there in Walbash Land. In a nutshell, we've been hauling some dirt off of there. And we've kept everything clean. Trucks have been tarred. I mean, there hasn't been a drop of dirt on county road. All the way through town. I do have a letter here from the city of Malvern. For you guys.
Thanks.
I'm assuming a copy though.
Yes, sir. It was surveyed by Eagle Engineering and showed grading plan there. The north property line will be like a three to one slope roughly on the north side there and as well as the east side there. It'll just kind of be flat there above three hundred and twelfth street. It runs north and south there. And Mar Avenue. Finished roughly within a foot of that black elevation of the Mar Avenue there.
When cubic yards total are, what was taken off there?
They are estimating they need, I think, right around sixty or eighty thousand yards of dirt to finish their project at Walbash Land.
Sixty to eighty thousand?
Yeah, roughly.
The grading plan that they submitted for was for eighty-one thousand cubic yards.
You know, I've been hauling dirt out of there every, you know, seven, five, Monday through Friday, half a day, possibly on Saturdays. Typically, roughly four to six trucks at a time roughly.
So you're saying that maximum, how many trucks a day?
Four to six.
Four to six trucks a day.
Roughly. We'll be better under dust control there. We'll keep the grade weighted down, stretch and entrance. Like I said, we've been keeping, keep track of. Track out on the roads, make sure nothing gets out in the more avenue there. Keep everything broomed and cleaned up.
We'd like to truck all through the winter.
What's that?
All through the winter.
The majority of it's gonna be done within probably thirty days.
Oh, really?
I mean, it's not gonna take long, very long to. Hold it in and spread it out. Just eventually, you know, somebody needs some dirt. Just kind of make the ten acres usable. Heather, are you able to hear?
Yes, I am.
And Heather, I forwarded you that letter that he handed us from the city of Malvern. I emailed that to you. I took a picture of it.
Oh, okay, thanks. I'll go look it up.
If you look at the zoning, that's where the. Form of things and stuff are answered. We can look at that and you guys can look at your convenience. Is there anything else, Travis?
No, I believe that's it.
Any question? Well, we can come back. I'll let you guys add, ask questions. Okay. Travis, is there any public comment this time? If there is public comment, after Travis sits down.
Thank you.
I'm Gail Ricker. My, I have the five acres next to his. And. As a landowner, I'm concerned about the excavation that's being done adjacent to my five acres. Observing the mounds of soil behind my property line is a concern as with weather elements, it can lend to movement and instability. I would like to know how this excavation project will be completed safely and without any future damage to our property. I was able to. Go around our fence line. This is our five acres. Our post, our fence lines right here, and I was standing on this hill. It's coming down, but as I was going along our fence line. It's going along the fence line. Here's our post right here, and it's topsoil, I imagine.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll go ahead and just have you direct us. I don't want you to.
Okay, it's tops.
Great.
I'm assuming it's topsoil.
Okay.
And this is our fence line right here. And then going down the road, it gets a little closer. Here's our fence line right here. So my concern is with our five acres, we plant.
Sure.
In those five acres.
So you're concerned to run off and what's gonna be?
Yeah, thank you.
And is that how long ago were those pictures taken?
Yesterday. So I just did ours, but that's my concern.
Correct.
So. Did you wanna?
Yes, go ahead. Give it to us.
This is standing on a hill. I walked up and this show where our land is. And then I walked along that five acres. Land is precious and I'm inheriting that from my father.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment?
Five hundred and fifty, live on. Five zero, Little Lane. Concerned about the water table as well as five hundred, it's about fifty feet, excuse me. Make sure there's no boring, no letting out of water. Any extreme use of the water would be a concern to me. That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Adjoining property, sir?
No, we're, we're down the road a little ways, but we're off of three hundred and twelve, a little private road that runs down. Back up to Silver Creek.
Okay. Okay, is there any additional pub, public comment? Okay, there is three letters that were written. If Matt would like to share those. Sure. Yep, yep, there's, I guess there's.
Yes. First one's dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Subject is formal complaint regarding conditional use permit number twenty-four dash one ninety-five. Dear Mills County Building and Zoning Department, we hope this letter finds you well. We are writing to formally express our concerns regarding the conditional use permit number twenty-four one ninety-five. Issue for the property located in Silver Creek Township and area otherwise known as Peaceville, which isn't very peaceful already with the nearby quarrying, dining, dynamiting daily and running heavy equipment. And Fremont County dump trucks roaring through. We feel that the owner of the property has undertaken activities that have significantly disrupted our community and has not adhered to the necessary county permit requirements. Firstly, it appears that from the letter received by the Mills County Building and Zoning Department dated October fourth, twenty twenty-four, that the owner has not filed the appropriate permits for commencing operations, which has included removing several square feet of ground. This action raises concerns about compliance with both zoning regulations and environmental impacts that could have been mitigated with proper oversight. Moreover, our neighborhood has experienced an increase in noise pollution due to the operation of dump trucks and other large equipment associated with these activities. The tranquility of our residential area is being compromised, and many neighbors have voiced their discomfort with the disruption caused by these industrial operations. Specifically, residents are concerned about the potential establishment of a commercial enterprise that would further detract from the peaceful nature of our community. This disregard for the established protocols not only undermines the integrity of local governance, but also disrespects the wishes of residents who have chosen to live in a quiet residential area free from industrial business. We earnestly request that the Mills County Building and Zoning Department investigate this matter promptly. This is critical for the welfare of our community that zoning laws are upheld and that the peace and quality of life in Silver City Township are safeguarded. Thank you for your attention to the urgent matter. We look forward to your prompt response and action regarding our complaints. Sincerely, Gretchen and Ivan. Yop, six two zero nine eight, three hundred and tenth street, Malvern, Iowa, five one five five one. The second one comes from Wendy Blackman. Hello, my name is Wendy Blackman. I own properties. I own the properties of three one one zero seven and three one one zero eight, Little Lane, Malvern, Iowa. I have concerns regarding the excavation and dirt removal at three hundred and twelfth street, Mar Avenue, for which I have received a notice of a conditional use permit application has been requested. The concerns that I have regarding the excavation and dirt removal in this car, number one, contamination of wells in nearby areas due to agricultural runoff. Once the dirt has been removed, it can increase the amount of soil and agricultural chemicals like fertilizers and pesticides going into nearby waterways, groundwater, potentially contaminating wells. Number two is the improper removal, improper ground removal near existing wells can cause damage to well casings. While my well is not close enough for this to be an issue, others are, including my father-in-law, Ed Blackman at three one two zero two, Little Lane. Number three, how can slash will this affect the water supply of the area? What happens and who will be responsible if it does or already has? Number four, how will the land be restored after the excavation? What it remain, will it remain as it is? Will anything be done to prevent further erosion to the soil? Number five, my understanding of the new owners of the land own a commercial business. How is this land zoned, residential, commercial, or agricultural? Proper permits were not obtained. My concern is anyone who runs a commercial business should understand how and where to obtain the proper permits needed to complete any work of this magnitude. Number six is if the business is going to be utilizing the area with heavy equipment, an appropriate entrance should also be constructed. The equipment removing the dirt is not safely entering or exiting the site. Many times I've almost been hit by trucks exiting the driveway. Thank you, Wendy Blackman. There's a kind of a PS, if excavation would continue, a different route to haul would be, would need to be discussed. The driveway leading on there is very small. So several times the trucks either cannot or refuse to stop or vehicles traveling along Mar Avenue. The last one we have is from Gary and Jill Ford, six two two five three, three hundred and tenth street, Malvern, Iowa, five one five five one. And regarding, writing in regards to the commercial building and dirt removal on Mar Avenue during twelfth street. Is my understanding of the proper permits were not obtained at the time of the start of the building, of the commercial building or land zone is agriculture. And also no permits were obtained for the dirt excavation and hauling. I have concerns with the way that the dirt excavation was slash is being handled with the digging of a deep hole. This area was plotted years ago to be the town of Peaceville. As you can see, it is heavily populated area for rural community. We all have wells as our source of water. A major concern that I have is how will this affect our water supply and possible contamination? Who will be responsible if we have water issues in the future? What is the plan after they are done with hauling soil? Will they restore it back to the way it is, the way it was, or will it be left as a giant hole? Why did they not follow the proper protocols and obtaining permits? If you're a business owner, that should have been your number one priority and known fact. Another very big concerns are the side dumps removing dirt in and out of the property. The drive is a tight turn. And they are over in the wrong lane. In order to make the turn, several mornings on the way to work, I've almost been hit as they are trying to make the turn. Is approved, which I hope it is not. You need to take into consideration the drive. The county engineers needs to get involved, and they need to figure out a new drive for the heavy equipment to get in and out of the property. Also, the amount of dirt that ends up on the road would be a danger if we had rain. Thank you for listening to our concerns. Sincerely.
Thank you. And I'm gonna get the staff report, let you guys go into board discussion. At this time, I'm gonna recuse myself. And Jenny in charge.
Heather, do you have anything?
Um. Is, has the DNR. Complet, because isn't that one thing that's required of? All extractions.
Correct. The Iowa DNR has been involved, has gotten involved in this as well, and general permit number two has been applied for from the Iowa DNR. And that's your, includes your stormwater pollution prevention plans.
But they haven't completed their stuff yet, correct?
Correct. There's. Advertisements and things that go into applying with the Iowa DNR that. I would say by the time a grading permit through the county gets done, that the Iowa DNR pieces of it would be completed. It's really, it's kind of a timeline piece of it. The DNR takes a long time. The county. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, is, do we have a topographical map?
We do have engineered grading plans that include the topos from the start to now.
Have they just.
Engineered plans.
Sorry, what was that, Matt?
I just said that she, she sent an email to you with the engineered plans and them as well. They were done by Eagle Engineering Group.
Okay. Maybe I missed them.
Matt, what do you got?
I'm fine. Now we'll do a discussion. Then we do a staff report first, then discussion.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to staff report.
So the staff report that I prepared for you and sent to you, the resource extraction is a listed conditional use in the AR district in which this property lies at. And I sent you guys kind of an aerial view of what we're dealing with on this on there. So. For the staff rec, a staff recommendation on this would be to approve the applicant for the condition to use for resource extraction with the following conditions. And number one, it would be that the applicant obtained the grading permit from the county before work starts back up to include the costs of what has already been removed. Number two is the applicant will secure the state permits from the Iowa DNR. Number three is that the applicant will work with Mills County Engineering Office on any dust control issues for the road. Number four is that the applicant will obtain third-party inspection reports showing that the site is in compliance with the engineered grading plan as submitted. Those reports will be submitted each month to the building department for review until the project is completed. Number five is that the proposed use of the property. If the proposed use of the property is for the applicant's business, that the applicant will apply for the necessary rezoning or code changes to make that a, to either make it allowable or go through that process. And this is based on the following findings of fact. Number one is that the zoning, the subject property is located in the class AR agricultural residential district. The zoning ordinance adopted in conjunction with the land use plan stipulate that resource extraction is a permitted conditional use in the district. Number two is that Mills County and Southwest Iowa have a housing shortage, and the shortage in the soil from the site is being used to support housing inside city limits of Malvern. Number three is while the time period of the soil extraction by hauling is a disruptive development of the communities in Mills County. Soil is needed to be able to grow those housing opportunities. The criteria set forth by the, by the county is meant to limit that impact.
Could you explain number five again of your conditions?
Could you explain number five again of your conditions?
Number five, uh, so Mr. Wright does own Wright Sewer and Water LLC. And I don't know that if it, I don't know if it is his intention to flatten that site and put up a machine shed to locate Wright Sewer and Water there. But if Wright Sewer and Water is to be located there, that would require some zoning changes and or some conditional use language added into our current zoning ordinance to allow for his business to be located there.
So you're saying if he wanted a business there, a new construction, new development, the zoning would have to be changed. Couldn't do that in AR.
Not right now. So you're either gonna have to add a conditional use into the AR district or you're gonna have to try to rezone that property to a zoning district that will allow for
Right.
the activity to take place there.
That's not what that's really about right now.
Right.
Little building's already up.
Alright, thank you.
Right.
Correct. And that's a separate issue from the soil extraction. Yeah.
Ready to move on to board discussion?
What what are the time of operation?
Monday through Friday, um, seven to five, five thirty. And then occasional maybe possibly Saturdays from seven to noon usually.
What do we have in the past on extractions? What were the hours? We have set of
I mean, it's a different one.
The only one that we allowed was the one where there were everybody that was around the extraction was family and was benefiting from it. And we let them operate. Other ones, we have limited the time they could start and when they had to quit. And then I think only a half a day on Saturday. I'm not sure what the, I can't remember what the hour.
Sounds right to me.
Yeah, that's right. I think these hours sound pretty close to what we've been doing before.
I think Heather's right on. I mean, I don't know if these are exact, but I think they're close.
And then the other question that was raised by several people was to drive the entrance. Do you plan to enlarge that?
That that driveway entrance was as big as the engineer, Mills County engineer would allow us to have there. I had a driveway permit and had them come out and inspect it and tell me what I can and cannot do there. That's as big as they'll allow us to have it there.
And do you have any rumble bars or anything set up to shake the trucks before they come out onto the pavement?
Um, there will be three inch rock leaving the property for, you know, seventy-five hundred feet, you know, from off of the property off the hill there.
Corey, I'm gonna draw on your knowledge on this. What do we mean for knocking the dirt off the trucks?
Needs to abstain from the discussion.
To abstain from any discussion.
What we did before is, you know, they worked with the county, you know, if there was complaints, then they had to go and use a water truck and they had to use a a bril. They didn't really use a worship. They had the concrete approach. And then flagman and the
Right, but I know it was an example on Google. Anything coming off the dirt, the dirt trucks run over a series of rumble bars that help shake the dirt off the tires and the fenders. I believe that the extraction that Corey has over by Mineola has the same thing on there. And I don't believe gravel is going to be enough, especially if we get any moisture. It's gonna pick up into the mud on the tires and that and drag that out on.
Did the engineer or the zoning department require that or ask for that?
As so as a part of the engineered plan, that's what we modify on there is they is that drive entrance to make sure that it stays clean and those thirty day inspections by the by the engineering to go out there and then recertify are all criteria being met. That would be annotated in their report to say, yeah, we add a new grout. We had to add more rock to it. Uh, or the rock was, the drive was good. Uh, the sweeper is what we would use on a road like that. So they would they would run sweepers as the trucks go on if they got dirt on the road.
Have you been running a sweeper or?
Yeah, there hasn't been a drop of dirt since we started and since we hauled there. I mean, we we check it in the morning, at lunch, and in the evening when the trucks are gone. And if and if there's any moisture, they haven't been running, so they're not tracking anything.
Is there a reclamation plan included in the grading plan?
No, cause the what they do with the grading plan is, well, I guess I wouldn't refer to it as a reclamation plan on it. It's just the finish grade of what it is, and that is included in the in their engineered grading plan. So it shows the slopes, what they took out and then what their slope boundaries will be at the end.
Okay, so our county doesn't require a separate reclamation plan then? On any of the dirt barrels that already been happening?
Well, there are dirt barrels out there that have reclamation plans on them and those, but it was a court ordered.
Court ordered?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. I shouldn't say, but I I think with all these conditions and requirements, uh, we should approve this. We know it wasn't right that he started without getting the permits. But you know, everybody in the county should be, you know, willing to forgive their neighbor and give them a chance. I mean, it's all recorded now, you know, they're doing a thirty day inspection. You know, the grading plan, the state permits required. The hours of operation, I think, are okay with me. Thirty day inspection and we're not talking about a lot of dirt. You'd say it's eighty thousand cubic yards. How many trucks would that be?
Hey, can I jump in real quick on that thirty days?
Well, they are ten yards.
Hang on just a second Heather.
Twenty seven, twenty seven yard trucks roughly.
Okay, go ahead.
Don't get me out of my tail later.
So, so with, you know, Pat hitting on that, um, didn't Mr. Wright say at the beginning, they have about thirty days left that they would be extracting to get to the eighty thousand amount? Um, so they're basically almost done and now they're coming to the board for approval.
Right.
That's because we posted a stop note, a stop work notice out there. But I will say that once Mr. Wright got the stop work notice that he did contact us right away and contacted the engineers and took all the right steps that as as somebody who's in a violation, I just, you know, went a lot smoother than fighting the entire problem, than fighting everything. So it's, you know, we contacted him. We told him this is what we need and that's what that's what he got us.
Okay.
So it can't stay the way it is. Make a motion or?
Question, so. You said a truck load will hold, how many cubic yards?
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen, okay. I'm not a dirt guy. I'm a pipe guy.
That's like five thousand trucks. If it's eighty thousand cubic yards. You're doing four or five a day. That's not being done in a timely manner. If I'm I'm wrong here?
Well, you have four or five trucks that are making multiple trips a day.
Multiple trips?
Yeah, multiple trips.
How many trips a day?
Oh, oh, I misunderstood.
You got four or five trucks running all day.
Yes, yes.
Trucks probably, how many, how many times a day, every truck, leaving it, leaving it in common?
Oh, I don't know. Probably each trip probably makes probably two, maybe four trips an hour, maybe. So.
When, when did this start?
When did it start?
When did you start actually?
Trying to think, when, when was that stop order issued?
Four or five.
It ran through the summer. We were kind of hearing grumblings about it during the summer, but we didn't have a clear location on where it was.
It's probably fifty or sixty loads coming and going.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes a difference. You said four or five. And it's, it's allowed in our county and the state. Done gone good reason to say you can't do that because probably get sued as we have before. But we can put conditions on it and I'm ready to make a motion to approve with all the conditions our board recommends. The hours of operation, any other conditions, you get you, you folks and Heather think I I probably I'd be okay with that.
Just to be clear, real quick, do you wanted to add on a condition for hours of operation?
Yeah, we want to set, set the hours. What if, I can't remember what the other ones were in the past, but these are similar. So Monday through Friday, seven to five thirty. And then Saturday, seven to noon. And then he can't run outside those hours.
Okay.
Is, is, is there a way, five thirty seems late. I'm, is there a way we can check what the other hours are and set it to what those have been?
Just say five.
I, I would really like for us to go back just so we keep continuity and everything we're doing. And whatever that we have set on the other ones, these just be the same. And I think it's going to be like seven to five. That's what I believe it is.
Let's just say seven to five then.
Well, I'm kind, there's no way to find that out right now. I'm sorry. What are other ones? I probably go do a little dig, but it's gonna take me a couple minutes.
Madam Chair, may I address the board? I address the board.
Now, yeah, public comments over, sorry.
Is one of your, one of the conditions here, the thirty day inspection? Is that one of your?
Yes.
Okay, that was number four.
That was number four.
Okay, yeah.
You can try.
With the thirty day inspection is, I mean, if they're saying they only have about thirty days left, that's kind of a moot point at this time.
Well, the thirty day inspection to, so they have, what they would have is about thirty days of hauling left, right, to potentially site, but then we have re-establishment periods as well. So you have to, once, once you reach the end of what you hauled out of there, then he's gonna re-spread out the topsoil. He's gonna either seed and mat those pieces that are there and then get, uh, get the grass re-established, some sort of growth re-established, whatever that case may be. So that's what we would be looking for for follow-up through that period, cause.
For the reclamation plan essentially.
And established.
I would say to any neighbors around, you know, if, if there's an issue with that street where they're being unsafe, you know, that's what our county sheriffs are for. That's their job. We got nothing to do with that street once it's on it. I recommend first trying to get ahold of Mr. Wright. If that doesn't work, Connor County Sheriff, they're they're charged with the roads. Once it leaves that property, we have nothing to say.
Investigating time.
She's gonna try to, but those old ones are just kind of stacked up in boxes. She's been working through them, but.
So we're talking six conditions and number six is the hours of operation.
Yes.
Missing a condition. If they're doing a thirty day inspection, wouldn't that take care of they find out and they require a sweeper, water truck or rumble strips or?
Right, yeah.
So I was, I was Googling since you guys are coming up with.
And would make it more.
Items.
To, on the letter of the law.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I would say I was Googling, um, as we were just talking, um, what Ted was looking for is like a concrete apron to shake the trucks off, I believe, before they hit the road.
Well, according to what we has been stated, they feel, the county feels that the gravel and the sweeper for the road will be enough. They won't need to, or through a vibrator, any concrete or a concrete apron. Is that correct?
Right, that gravel drive is built out of rough gravel and it's meant to, I mean, it's not like a smooth residential driveway that you're pulling into when those dirt trucks are running. I mean, it's a reclaimed concrete drive.
The other thing, there's nothing in our zoning laws anywhere that says if someone starts a project and it has to be stopped, that they're completely terminated and can't reapply, right?
Right.
Right.
We're not disciplinary.
Well, but we can, can't we? We can hold them from starting back up until the DNR plan and the reclamation plan are completed, can't we? Because I think the DNR plan is really important at this point. I mean, you're talking about, you know, taking topsoil.
That's what we have. The engineer grading permit pieces of this is exactly what's submitted for your slip from the DNR. So it's include, we have the same documentation. It's just the state mandate. If you disturb more than an acre, you have to get a permit through them.
And we haven't got the permit from them yet, right?
Even though you get, even though we give them, we do a permit here at the county level, irregardless of our county level permit. If you disturb more than an acre of ground, you have to get the state permit.
Right.
So.
And that has, that hasn't been granted yet, right?
The states.
Did you get that part Heather? That our that our grading plan is more restrictive than the states?
Okay.
So that's why they feel that we don't necessarily have to wait for that state. I don't know why I keep looking up.
Audrey did locate.
Voice from above Jenny.
Audrey did locate a conditional use permit eighteen dash zero zero three resource extraction. And the condition on that for hours of operation was Monday through Friday, six thirty AM to six PM, Saturday, seven AM to one PM. Not, no work on Sundays.
What was the start?
Okay.
Seven, seven.
I don't like that. I like what we had before in consideration of the neighbors all around there. Know you want to keep everything uniform. I don't know, remember six thirty to six.
Matt, is there a, like a fine matrix for something like this? I don't recall seeing one, but.
I, a what?
A fine, like, I mean, you you started this, I mean, is.
So the permit fees are doubled.
Okay.
That's what you're fine. It doesn't include your plan review fee. It just becomes your permit fee is doubled.
So moving forward.
Go ahead.
Are you ready to make a motion then Heather?
No, I just have another question. Um, is uh, like, so the property owner is not the one hauling the dirt, is that correct? Okay, so are the, is the company, companies, whoever's hauling the dirt, were they not aware, is this like their first time and they're not aware of, um, the rules we have in the county for hauling dirt?
I think the responsibility of it permits always just fall on the property owner.
Okay.
Nope, I asked him, he said nope. Heather, are you ready?
Yeah, you're gonna read everything, right?
We're gonna what?
Or Matt will. All the conditions that we're setting.
The conditions? I, I think Pat has them written down.
Well, Matt's got them written better.
Okay.
Okay, so it'd be with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant will obtain a grading permit from the county before work starts back up to include the costs of what has been removed. Number two is that the applicant will secure the state permit from the Iowa DNR. Number three is that the applicant will work with the Mills County Engineers Office on dust control for the road. Number four, the applicant will obtain third party inspection reports showing that the site is in compliance with the engineered grading plan. As submitted, those reports will be submitted each month to the building department for review until the project is complete. Number five is if the proposed use of the property is for the applicant's business, the applicant will apply for the necessary rezoning and or code changes. Number six is that the hours of operation for the site will be Monday through Friday, seven to five thirty, Saturday, seven to noon. And that's it.
Do you want to change the hours to what the other ones are? Okay, stay seven, five thirty. We can do that.
Alright, I make a motion to approve under the, all the conditions that Matt has just recorded.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Pat made a motion or Ted second?
Other gentleman?
No.
Jennifer Warren?
Yes.
Dan Golka?
Yes.
Pat Collins.
Yes.
Alright, Corey can come back. Make note that Corey is re-entering.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Matt. At this time. Is there any other business? Business, so is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? I'll go ahead, I'm sorry, Ted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for Ted. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, others.